And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, delirating in justice to God.
Still miss trying to do that online. That was so much fun. I don't see any adjustments? Any adjustments?
I think I'll just, when it gets to my report, I may move some of the others around.
Yep. I think we've given you that latitude in the past, Mr. Nelson.
Yep.
Approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve Monday, November 1st, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Mapes. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor. Approved. Public comments. Do we have anybody here for public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Who's running Zoom? No? Not everybody on Zoom? Excellent. Communications, Mr. Nelson. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay, no communications. Onto committee reports. The floor is yours.
I'll start with construction report. The high school and SRTC. Following our last school committee meeting, I met with our legal counsel and a representative from the Maine Department of Education on Thursday, November 4th. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss some upcoming, the upcoming arbitration hearing that we have scheduled for next month on the high school SRTC construction project. Good news is the HP flooring complaint issue has been resolved, and that's going to be dismissed without any payment or any impact on the school department. But in regards to the arbitration, if you remember, the contractor's lawyer has reached out to us again to consider a settlement offer. Initially, we tried mediation, but that was unsuccessful. They were only willing to take off a few thousand dollars off a hundred thousand dollars claim, and we were starting at twenty thousand dollars. So as you could see, there was, that was not happening. So, but they have reached out to us, our legal counsel, regarding potential. No offers have ever been exchanged, but there is interest in possibly settling and avoiding arbitration. And really what it comes down to for all involved parties is, do you want to settle or do you want to litigate? The cost of arbitration is estimated to be between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand dollars. And then a reminder that if we do lose, then we have to pay the full freight of the hundred thousand dollar claim. So that's something right now that they are discussing at the legal attorney level. That being said, I'm looking to have a core building committee meeting this Thursday at the eight, the 18th at four o'clock, so we can discuss this issue. And I'll also update our other construction projects, as well as the current local bond spending at this Thursday's Core Building Committee. A reminder that we do have a meeting scheduled for December 1st and December 2nd at the High School and Technical Center. That's an onsite meeting with all the players to fully investigate the tripping issues that we've been having with the air handling units. And then the other update I have is at Sanford Pride Elementary. We are trying to schedule a meeting with our playground rep. We do have some questions about a few pieces of the equipment on the K through twelve, K through two playground that some of our students are having difficulty accessing, the zip line, the monkey bars, and the teacup structure. And so we might have to make some adjustments for that. So that's the, that's my construction report.
Thank you. Sounds like we're gonna have to go onsite, check out this playground issue. Me and Mr. Mapes are on it. Okay, what do we got? Any questions? Anybody with that? Nope. Okay, so we're on to the scheduling advisory committee.
Yes, our High School Technical Center Schedule Advisory Committee met last Monday, November 8th, for a couple of hours in the afternoon. Just a reminder, one of the things we're trying to do with this committee is start the process with a clean slate and really just kind of look at a schedule from the ground up. We're trying to assess and determine what we want to have a schedule do, and what do we want to see, and what are the things that we don't want to see. So doing that, we're trying to break down different parts of the schedule to learn more about those. The prior meeting we had focused on Spartan time. So at last Monday's meeting, we finalized talking about that. But then we also spent time talking about the impact of some things on a schedule, especially Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center schedule. And that would be lunch, the impact that lunch has on a schedule, as well as the SRTC requirements as part of what they have as their schedule. So we did discuss those in depth, looking at that. As I mentioned, one of the things that we're trying to also, as we look at these things, is what's wrong with our current schedule? And then what are those things that work well with our current schedule? And then kind of looking at some of the other schedule options that are out there. So our next meeting, we're trying to meet every three weeks or so. So our next meeting is Tuesday, November 30th at 2:30. Some of the other topics that we're gonna break down would be advanced placement courses, electives, graduation requirements, and some options for classes and credits outside the Sanford High School schedule. We've scheduled, the following meeting after that will be Tuesday, December 14th. That meeting will take place actually during Spartan time. And one of the things we're gonna look for at that meeting is to look at the new skinny block option that's going on at the high school. So that's an update on that advisory committee. Dawn and Paula, you're both there, so I don't know if there's anything that you want to add as well to about that meeting.
Oh, no, you're good. I just think, I think we've said it before, but I think it's a great process. We have students involved. We, I think we've got every stakeholder, if you will. And it's just, it's a process. I mean, we're talking about a big task here, and we want to make sure we do it right, so we're not flipping schedules repeatedly in the future. So, look forward to the chat on the 30th. Okay, Sanford Performing Arts Committee. Paula, do you have anything from the SPAC?
I do, actually. Quite a few things. One is that we are definitely back. We are open. We opened up the season with an absolutely awesome show. I went to see it this past weekend, the Buddy Holly story, and it was absolutely amazing. Yeah, I can't say enough about it. I know that you two girls, right? It was an amazing show. It was wonderful. And you two worked behind the scenes, so I was gonna give you a chance to talk about what that experience was like for you. Yep.
And then I'll jump in with the rest of the information I got.
Well, we were at the school at 5:45 in the morning, unloading the semi-truck of their sets, costumes, and everything they packed into that truck. And then we were there until probably like, what, 7:30 at night? And it was a long, long day for us, but it was so much fun because I was assigned to the costuming and wigs, like, because they used a lot of wigs. I was assigned to that little group. And so I got to work really close with the costume designer, and I got to meet most of the cast. And Mrs. Baker and I were the only two from Sanford who got to help out backstage during the show. So I didn't see the show personally, which I was a little sad about, but it was really, really cool to see the behind the scenes and how amazingly awesome it was. And like, I'm losing the words, how effortless they made it look, even though it was such a long day for them. So it was really cool.
Yeah, I think it was a really great opportunity, just like for us as students. Like, there was probably 10 of us, 11 of us?
Yeah.
Theater students who just came in and got to like, see it, literally a giant flamboyant show come right off and then just get performed. And I, so I helped out, same things that Grace did. And then I got to watch the show, and we were cheering the whole time. So it was, it was, it was really good and a really cool opportunity for us to just see it professionally. Like, we do a really good job at the high school level, but it is a whole nother step up when you get to see it professionally and see those kind of career paths as well.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Yes.
If anybody ever has the chance to see that show, I recommend it. It was just fantastic. Couple other things is we've got the Carole King tribute coming up this weekend. It was the first show that we had to cancel last year. And actually Brett had to call them as they were in the airport, waiting to get on the plane to come here, and he had to cancel it. So we're very excited to have them back. We're hoping that there's a big audience for that one this weekend. What else do I want to tell you? We've got the Nutcracker production this Christmas, and I wanted to say that tickets are a really great Christmas present. And they're not stuck on a boat somewhere in some shore. So it's a great way to, you know, stock those stuff, stuffings, stuff your stockings this Christmas. And it's the same production that you would see at Merrill, except they're starting it here, which is just amazing that it's right here in Sanford. And I also wanted to say that businesses in town, you know, I'm wondering if maybe some of the restaurants would want to join in and capitalize on the economic, you know, drive of the Sanford Performing Arts Center and maybe join in and do something like, I don't know, go online and put a little plug in there, like, hey, if you've got tickets for the Carole King, you know, why don't you come here for dinner beforehand? And we've got the, you know, I'm the woman of the year drink and, you know, dinner special or whatever it is, just in case, because I think that we're definitely turning the Sanford Performing Arts Center into an economic, economic driver. So I think it would be great. And I think that is all I have. No, one more thing. Everyone should have received their brochure that has all our shows for the season. And if not, you can find them at the main entrance lobby at Town Hall, because it'll be, they'll be there waiting for you as well. And that's it.
Awesome. Great. Thanks, Paula.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, Amy. Please go ahead.
I, I attended the, you both were also in the Almost Maine, the romantic comedy. So amazing job. I went. You guys did awesome. So great job. That was the weekend of November 6th and 7th. So awesome.
Yeah, it's great to have everything happening there again. It's such an incredible venue. Okay, so superintendent report. We'll start off with our, our student reps. I don't know, Grace, Bella, who wants to go first? I'll leave it up to you guys to duke it out.
I will go first. I just wanted, I had a few things to report it back on, first being Almost Maine. Bella and I, we were together throughout the whole process because we were on the tech crew. So we got our own little table, and we did the music and the sound effects. And so we were able to watch the show all of the times it was performed. And each time, I was very impressed with what we were able to put together in such a short amount of time. And I know even one of the actors, unfortunately, they couldn't perform because of a COVID issue. And so within 24 hours' notice, one of the actors stepped in in that role, and she did amazing. And so it was really cool to see that she was able to do that. And it was just on a really good play. Another thing was sports. Now that sports is wrapped up, I know there's a sports banquet tonight. And then I know I have my banquet tomorrow. And so it's sad to say that the season's come to an end, but it's good to hear that we're having a banquet, unlike last year when we didn't. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was from the backpack program. It's the middle of November, and at the beginning of November, we started the Box of Joy Initiative. And so right now I am eyeballs deep in candy canes, sugar cookie mix, and frosting. And it's just really great to be reminded that this community is amazing if you give them a task. And so I just wanted to thank everybody.
All right. So yeah, pretty much covered a lot of it. I had a couple of other things. On Main Street, if you have seen kind of the painted windows, it looks like very Christmasy. That is a Christmas tree auction where a bunch of local businesses are basically decorating a tree, sponsoring a tree. And they have a bunch of different themes, like a gingerbread theme or a cocoa and coconut tropical theme. And you can go in an auction, and that's gonna be December 3rd and 5th. That's really cool. They've got to have like, at least, they could fit 100 trees in that room, but I think they're about to, they have like 70 right now. So that's really cool. And then another thing, for peer helpers, we are doing some Thanksgiving baskets and food drives, so that's going well. And then, yeah, I think you covered the banquet and stuff like that. But yeah, so it's going well.
Great. Thanks for the update. So, Mr. Nelson, on to you.
Sure.
Where you want to start?
Yeah, I'd like to, I think if I could move things around a little bit, I'm gonna have our school nurse recognition come first, so we can maybe get them out of here and get home and get them well-rested, I'm sure, for everything that they have to go through. I'll ask Steve to come up. Our school nurses are amazing, and congratulations and thanks to all of our school nurses for all you do to keep our students and staff safe. And so they were recently recognized at the Maine School Management Association 2022, 2021 Fall Conference. They were presented with the Distinguished Service Award at that 2021 Fall Conference. With that, the Maine School Board Association Board of Directors wanted to express thanks and appreciation to all of the school nurses and their colleagues during the ongoing battle with the effects of COVID-19. As we know, operating schools during this time at best has been a challenge. However, knowing that our school nurses are providing steady and guidance during phone calls, endless contact tracing, and administrator staff, parent, and student reassurances have allowed us to keep our schools open and operate at a very high level during this pandemic. So the Maine School Board Association wanted to honor their work and outstanding, very eager to provide them with this recognition. So what I wanted to do is, we invited a few tonight, and I think some might be joining us via Zoom. But I also think, to really put this in perspective, I asked Steve to kind of do his best to kind of walk us all through a day in the life of a school nurse during COVID, because what they've been able to accomplish is amazing.
So, a day in the life of a school nurse. Before COVID, our school nurses were extremely busy. Just to give you a rundown of what they do, a normal day in our school nursing offices, they see 50 students at minimum. And many of our school nurses' office, when flu season hits, they could see 70 or 80 students a day. So they are hopping places. Our school nurses provide health assessments. They develop and implement health plans, including plans for students with diabetes, asthma, and other chronic health conditions. They administer routine medication. They provide crisis intervention for acute illnesses, injury, and emotional incidents. They maintain health data. They maintain current immunization records, and they promote regular vaccinations. They communicate frequently with families about requiring the appropriate paperwork, reminding parents of when immunizations are due. They started out with flu clinics, and for as long as I can remember, our nurses have played a critical, critical role in implementing the flu clinics in our district. That has been expanded this past spring to the COVID-19 vaccination clinics. And on top of all that, we've had a new law in the state of Maine in regards to immunizations for students in grades six and 12 with the TDAP and the MCV4. And we had a vaccination clinic that they played a pivotal role for this summer. Other duties, they prepare reports that are necessary for the Maine Department of Health and Human Services and the Maine Department of Ed. They screen students for vision and hearing, which plays an important role. My own son, we had our parent conferences, and the teacher question is vision. And so the school nurse on Friday tested him. And so they play a critical role in, in that. And then they assist the school department in our health-related policies with that. And then there's this caveat that says, all duties others that, that are assigned. And when they signed up for their job, they probably didn't envision COVID-19. But COVID-19 really did send our nurses into high gear. And I think we owe a great amount of gratitude for them and the work they, they have done. First of all, they provided us with the knowledge and expertise in implementing the COVID-19 SOPs. I worked closely with the nurses alongside with Matt, and we are not medical folks. And so I appreciate their patience as they, they have led us through different scenarios and their medical expertise. Started out last year when we brought kids back. They, every day, we had the parents fill out those COVID-19 screeners. And so each day, our nurses went through and, and looked at the students that had symptoms, and they followed up with those families. They triaged students that came into their nurses' office last year, not just did they have a little sniffle, but did they have symptoms of COVID-19? And if they had symptoms of COVID-19, they had to escort the student to an isolation room, monitor them, supervise them, and then call the parents at home and say, I'm sorry to let you know, but your child has symptoms. In regards to that, they are the first line of defense. Oftentimes, if we hear a student has tested positive or a family member has tested positive COVID-19, the nurse gets the call. And then they consult, they call up the Maine Department of Education or nursing consultant, or they check in with the SOP, and they say, where do we go from here? That oftentimes leads into contact tracing, so identify who has close contact with this student. The nurses alongside our administrative team and teachers and staff have spent a tremendous amount of time in terms of contact tracing. In contact tracing, this doesn't happen on a Monday morning. It oftentimes happens on a Friday evening or Super Bowl Sunday at 4:30 or on holidays like that. And so identifying those close contacts. And then, I'm really proud of this in our district. For the most part, we have called all families that have been identified as close contacts. We have really tried not to send robo-calls. We have on a couple of occasions when it just, there was a necessity there, but we've tried to make those individual phone calls, and how difficult they are to make. Our nurses were on the front line of making those calls. And then, making those calls, but then tracking when students are supposed to be out, how long they need to be out, giving them guidance on when they can come back. And our staff, last year, we tried to separate staff and had hired a separate group to deal with our staff. But oftentimes, our nurses were put into that role of answering questions for staff and really helping our school have some sense of reassurance that we're all gonna be safe, we're all gonna be okay, and we'll get this, through this together. Then we flipped the page to this year. So we continue everything we did last year. We are working on getting everybody vaccinated. These guys have been tremendous in looking and figuring out which students have been vaccinated, which students have not been vaccinated, as that all relates to quarantining. We've added pool testing to the mix, and I want to give a big shout out to all our new school nurses, but especially Amy Humphrey, who has taken that on to keep our kids safe, keep our kids in school with pool testing and by next now testing. All of our school nurses now have started to use on-the-spot rapid testing to keep our staff in school and to keep students in school as they see fit. Without these groups, group of ladies, because they're all female, we could not have kept our schools open, kept our schools safe, and we owe a great amount of gratitude to those folks. And so, if you two want to come up? And so when I, just to give you like, the hours they've spent, they have spent above and beyond the school day. Oftentimes, like I mentioned, it's in the nights, on the weekends. It's not uncommon for our school nurses in the heat of things to be working 20 hours more than, than what they're normally scheduled, if not more. And for that, just tremendous, tremendous. And so here I have.
Beth, do you have, can we put up the Zoom? Is that possible to get, do it?
Oh, Sarah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
So I think we, I think we have three of our school nurses with us tonight. I don't think I see anybody else.
But I, yeah, and I want to, I'll read off, what we've got here is the Maine School Board Association Distinguished Service Award. And so the first one is to Mary Boone, who was our school nurse at Margaret Chase Smith School. Deborah Toothaker, who is the school nurse at Sanford Pride Elementary School. Melissa Phillips, who we brought on this year with ESER funds to help us from a district-wide perspective. So Melissa Phillips. And then we do have Caitlin joining us via Zoom. Caitlin Gray is the new school nurse at Sanford Middle School. And the two have joined us in person today. Thank you very much. School nurse at Carl J. Lamb School, Amy Humphrey. And school nurse at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, Lynn Signor.
Yeah, I don't think we can say thank you enough to the other nurses, especially after the last couple of years they've had, so.
I, I asked Amy and Lynn if they wanted to say a few words, and they said, no, we're really tired. We want to get home. So, well done. Thank you.
Nice night.
I think it was last year when they put together a list of items, they sent it to the school committee of other, out of the ordinary tasks that they do on any given moment. It was like...
It was exhausting just reading the list.
It was unbelievable.
Let alone living it.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, kudos to, kudos to our school nurse. Obviously, well, well-deserved in terms of everything that they've been doing to help keep us in school and keep our students and staff safe. Next up, I'd like to turn things over to Beth Laterno. We have, one of the things that we're also very proud of is our Upper Bound program that is connected to Sanford High School. And I know that the current grant that we're under is coming to an end, but I also know that we're looking forward to applying for another one. And part of that is because how successful the program's been. It's something we're very proud of. So I'll turn it over to you folks to be able to share and help spread that good word about Upper Bound.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm Beth Laterno, the Director of School Counseling for Sanford Schools. We have Alyssa West, who's the Director of Upper Bound, and also Mia Noon, who is a student at Sanford High School, a senior who is part of the Upper Bound program. And Alyssa's gonna get us started tonight.
Thank you so much for inviting us to talk about Upper Bound. Usually when we talk about Trio or Upper Bound, people either have never heard about it, or they think we're outward bound, which is very different. So always appreciate the chance to talk about what we do. Going to just give a little background about Trio and Upper Bound. It actually was created back in the 60s as part of Lyndon B. Johnson's War on Poverty. So it came out of the Higher Education Act. So it's been around for quite a while, originally part of three grants that were designed to increase college access for either income-eligible or students who would be first gen, and their definition being neither parent in the home having a four-year degree. So since then, it's grown. There's now eight programs, still called Trio, because that's the way the Department of Ed works. But they serve anywhere from middle school students up through high school, college, graduate, adults, and veterans. So Upper Bound works specifically with high school students. There are about 800 programs throughout the country. There's five in Maine, and our Upper Bound program is housed at USM. So that doesn't mean our students have to go to USM. It just means USM is responsible for hiring a grant writer and putting together the grant and making sure that we offer services and do what we said we do in the grant. We actually have two Upper Bound grants at USM. One is the RSU project that serves 64 students at Massa B6, Saukapi, and Westbrook. And then we have our Sanford-Bitterford grant that serves 63 students at those two high schools. They've actually been around for quite a while also. Our Sanford-Bitterford project has been around since 2004, and before that was served by the Bowden Upper Bound program. So a little bit of history there. We serve, currently, I think we have about 39 spots. And at least two-thirds of our slots are always Sanford students, in part because of the effort that the school counseling office and the teachers put into making sure we fill those spots with Sanford students, because they recognize the value in it.
Thank you. And we're always quick to try to steal spots from other schools. If they don't, other schools that are part of the project don't fill their spots, they allow Sanford to take those spots, which we do. So part of what I'm gonna talk about today is the recruitment process. And so what we do is, part of the school counseling national model, one of the pieces of it is doing a needs assessment every year. And we're proud to see almost 900 out of 1,100 kids complete the needs assessment every year. One of the questions we ask students is, are you a first-generation college student? And we usually break that down, because a lot of students might not know what that means, but meaning you're the first parent in your home to complete a bachelor's degree, and explaining the difference between a bachelor's and associate's degree versus a certificate. With that data, and then also emails out to staff, we then get a list of students that we start to connect with about Upper Bound. And that involves emails to their family, a call-down that we did last week where Upper Bound came and met with eligible students and talked about their program. And then applications went out. And then probably, I would say in the next week, we'll reach out to the kids that went to the call-down program but didn't complete the application process, to encourage them to complete the process to apply to be part of Upper Bound. There's different eligibility considerations that Alyssa talked about earlier. One is income. The second is parent education that neither, that, sorry, both parents in the home did not complete a four-year degree. So if one parent did... So if one parent did a bachelor's degree, if one parent did, the student is still eligible. Other risk factors include state assessment and GPA, and then citizenship status. So US citizen, permanent resident, or asylum-seeking resident. Other factors that are part of it is academic ability. Does this student have the ability to complete a bachelor's or an associate's degree? Do they have a motivation, right, to pursue a post-secondary education? Do they want to go on to some kind of college education? And also, their level of interest in Upper Bound. This program, we have lots of different programs at the high school for students, but this one is really specifically for students that are interested in going on to a two- or a four-year college, so an associate's or specifically a bachelor's degree.
So what services does Upper Bound provide? Really, we have two kind of different types of services. One, that's provided during the academic year, and that's weekly meetings with the students at the school. So each grant has two advisors that work with their caseload, which for them amounts to about 30, 35 students. So it's a pretty small caseload. They meet anywhere from 10 minutes. It could be a quick check-in, doing great in classes, don't need a lot of support. It could be an hour and a half, as Mia will tell you, working on the essay and the Common App and the profile and all those things that come along with being a senior. We also offer trips during the academic year. So we just took a group of students up to tour Hassan and UMaine and go to a hockey game at UMaine. Ironically, next month, we're offering a trip to see the Nutcracker at the Merrill Auditorium, but now I'm second-guessing that. So lots of trips and activities, and now offering a lot of online events too. And then, really, what, whatever's happening in those meetings with students can vary a lot. So we might have a student who is in AP classes, excelling academically, they really want help with maybe figuring out a career path or interning, job shadowing. We might have a student who is really struggling with their classes and they need help with tutoring, which we can provide, or they just need someone to check in and make sure that they're paying attention to their grades and talking about their projects and what's going well and what they could use help with. So really, when you think about preparing a student for going to college, it's a lot more than academics. It's social, it's, you know, their career path, it's cultural enrichment, all those things that they need to experience and feel to go onto a campus and feel like they belong there and that they can be successful. Our summer program, which is often the most exciting piece, is we have a six-week summer program. And what that looks like for each student depends on their year. So our rising sophomores will attend a one-week immersion program, really focused on personal exploration, career exploration, leadership development. Rising juniors will attend a five-week program on the USM campus. They go home on the weekend, so they're there just during the week, but just kind of experiencing a college life. They'll take classes, so we offer, you know, the core academic classes plus college success class. They've been taking Mandarin, which has been really fun for them to learn something a little different. And then, our rising seniors, who we know want to work all summer and earn money, will come onto campus for one week, where we call it a power week, because they are powering through their applications and their essay and just preparing to enter their senior year of high school, fully prepared, and help make their school counselors' jobs a little bit easier.
Additional benefits, I would say for sure, for students that are part of Upper Bound is the access to an advisor and individual support. It was mentioned earlier, we have about 40 students, 43, I think it is, at Sanford High that are part of Upper Bound, that have two advisors that are there between one and three days a week. Eligibility for waivers and scholarships, so all of the programs that Alyssa spoke about, including the Nutcracker. And trips to visit colleges are free, including if they go to visit a school, they eat on campus for free, the Nutcracker, I'm sure you're going to take them out for like a steak dinner. So all of those things are free for students, which is important. They also, for the summer program, get an elective credit at the high school. There's also stipends associated with being part of Upper Bound for regularly attending their appointments with their Upper Bound advisor, to being part of the summer program. And I believe the max they can get is $900, which is pretty awesome. Also, a connection with their cohort, so not just students that are in Upper Bound at Sanford High School, but also connections with students that are part of Upper Bound from Massa Biscuit or Bitterford. Personal advocate and a mentor, and equity and access. And I think, for me, working as a school counselor, it's not just about, for students going on that are first-generation, going on to college, it's not just about them finding the right college, but also being ready for that experience. And so, if you are a student whose parent or guardian did not complete a bachelor's degree, your parents are doing their best, right? But they might not know about how to complete those financial aid deadlines. Also, how do you live with a roommate and deal with that? And I know those are a lot of the experiences. Anyone here have any roommate issues? So a lot of people don't have those experiences when they were in college, and maybe their parents didn't, to be able to give them advice about how do you live with somebody in a dorm room and have intention and work through it. But for Upper Bound students, that's something they may experience during that summer at USM. Also, paperwork, how to register for classes, that's a whole different experience than registering for classes when you're in high school, but also, in addition, how to study, when to study, assertive skills, all of those kind of things that all students need, but really specifically what we would consider to be first-generation college students. I wish Upper Bound would create their own grant for Sanford High School, and I think I mention that all the time, because we could definitely fill more spots, but we're definitely grateful for the spots that we have.
This might be the last slide, so I'll try to be brief. So we're starting to write our next five-year grant, and it is a competitive grant, but because we are an existing program and we meet our objectives, that gives us a little bit of a boost. And so, one of the things I've been doing is diving into some of the data from our last grant and seeing how it compares to our grant now, that, the data that I pulled from the main data warehouse. So just to clarify, I did pull our Upper Bound students out of the total raw data so that they're not counted in any of this information. But when we wrote the grant back in 2016, we looked at the college-going rate for economically disadvantaged, so free, reduced-lunch students, at Sanford High School and non-economically disadvantaged. And the difference was a 13-point difference. So 63% of non-ED students were going to college, 50% of economically disadvantaged students were going. So there was a 13-point difference. When I looked at the data for 2019, there's actually a bigger difference. And I want to clarify that this is across all of our target schools and the other schools that I was looking at to potentially add a third new grant. We're seeing this disparity grow. And so, while our schools are doing wonderful things and really helping students, there's still a disparity that exists at a fundamental level that Upper Bound and other Trio programs are helping to address. We also look at college completion. So when we wrote the grant back in 2016, 33% compared to 25% were completing within six years. When I looked at the data for 2019, so this would have been the 2013 class that started college back then, there was actually a bigger disparity. So that's grown to a 30-point difference. So schools are doing amazing work getting students in, but clearly, there's still a need for Trio programs, Upper Bound, college, you know, the college programs, all the work that Trio is doing to help students and to help address this gap is clearly still needed. So, and I just want to be really clear that this was across all of our target schools. We know that, we see firsthand how amazing the school counseling offices are, and the schools are doing great work. How is our grant doing? So we are measured on six objectives. This is how many students are earning a 2.5 or above, how many of our seniors are completing a rigorous curriculum, how many are moving on or graduating from high school, proficiency on state assessments. We do really well on all those. We exceed those by leaps and bounds. But what we care most about is how many are getting in, and then how many are completing. Because it's great if we can get them in, but clearly, we see that having them complete is a bigger issue. And that's something that, that really individualized targeted service with Upper Bound helps address, because we're preparing students to enter, but then to feel comfortable and confident staying in school and completing. So our goal for enrollment in post-secondary ed the fall right after high school is 75%. And if we look at the average for the first four years of our grant, we're at 81%. So we exceeded that goal, which we're really proud of. And then, completion within six years, this one always stings me a little bit, because I feel like it should be higher, but our baseline was, what, 23% were completing in six years. So our objective is 50%, and we are right at 50%. So we're reaching all of our goals, and that, that helps provide us with prior experience points that will help us in the next grant cycle, which is pretty competitive. So we're writing that grant now. It's due, we expect, at some point in January, and we'll hear at some point in the spring, which of course will, will keep everyone posted. I think I had one more. I did have one more, a little box. So we looked at our 2018 to 2020 students, and 68% of those were still enrolled. And from 2015 to 2020, 58% were enrolled or have completed. So our students from Sanford are doing well. We're really proud of that. And it's, you know, Beth will repeat this every time, that we serve more students at Sanford than probably any other Upper Bound program serves at a target school in the state. And I can't, you know, I was an advisor working with Sanford students for probably 12, 13 years, and the difference in Sanford High School compared to the other schools in how they welcome Upper Bound and really take advantage of the services for students is just outstanding. So we are pleased to still be here and hoping that we'll be here for another five years as well. I'm going to let Mia step in and share a little bit about her experience in Upper Bound.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mia Noon, and I'm a senior at Sanford High School. I was accepted into the Upper Bound program, my freshman year, and I've been a part of the program since then. To me, I view Upper Bound as a resource, support system, and opportunity all in one. It's kind of like a mega combo, if you ask me. As a resource, their job is to aid students in learning more about the college admissions process, so that when they reach their senior year, they know what to do and how to go through college admissions. Obviously, a large portion of that resource is educating first-gen students on the process itself, as they do not have as many informed supporters as a student that is not a first-gen student. They also provide several opportunities to students to experience the college dynamic through their in-person weeks at USM and their various college tour trips. As someone with a lot of social anxiety, these Upper Bound experiences made it so that I've become much more comfortable with the many unknowns I'll face in a social context next fall, when I'm in college, and the program has connected me with other Upper Bound students from other districts. For many students, it may be difficult to tour schools outside of town, so these opportunities are extremely beneficial, especially in communities like southern Maine and more specifically Sanford.
Awesome, thanks, Mia. Do we have any questions for anybody, or Mia, or?
Oh, one thing I did, just, sorry, wanted to add, is that part of the beauty of Upper Bound is that after students graduate from high school, Upper Bound stays connected with students. And so, I think that's also a big part of helping with the college completion rate, if that makes sense, the connection. Can you speak a little bit, not to put you on the spot, but what, how often you're in touch with students once they've graduated and gone on to college?
Sure. So I will tell you, I just had a parent of a Sanford student email me about a week ago and ask what was going on with her student's bill, and I was able to do a little digging, checked in with a student, checked in with my access on Main Street for USM, and was able to walk her through what was going on and help them get their bill paid. So I think sometimes, for the parents and guardians, just having someone they know they can reach out to, and, you know, just like school counselors, it's, you know, Sunday afternoon, and we're responding to an email, because that's when people are asking for the help, and sometimes that's what it takes. So we do, I think, really informally follow them. We're, you know, researching, obviously, their enrollment for reporting purposes, but also just checking in with them, offering alumni events, reunions, and then just making sure they're doing okay. So if we know they're at Smith or UMaine, or, you know, SMCC, we're just checking in. And if we're going to campus for a tour, we'll try to catch up with them and have them meet with our current students. So we definitely stay connected, and we're always there for them if they need anything. There's also other Trio programs, so we will connect them with Student Support Services at their school, or EOC, which serves other students as well. So really follow them.
Awesome, great. Any questions, anybody? Hey, hey, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good program. Okay, Mr. Nelson, what do we have next?
Awesome job.
Oh, no questions, okay.
Oh, no, I think we're good, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, excellent, thank you to our Upper Bound presentation. We'll move on next. You know, we go from our student rep reports to the school nurse recognition to Upper Bound, and now we're going to talk about our Safe Return to School and Continuity Obstruction Plan update. Ugh.[1461.76][1461.76](LAUGHTER). So I don't know if there's any other way to transition with that, but I'll do my best. The state of Maine has set yet another record for the number of individuals hospitalized with COVID-19. As of Monday, there were 261 individuals in the hospital, including 72 in critical care and 35 on ventilators, and that's an increase of 12 from just Sunday, an increase of 46 or 21% in just one week. About two-thirds of the hospital patients with the virus have not been fully vaccinated, according to the Maine CDC. And when you look at Maine's most recent seven-day positivity rate, or the percentage of tests that come back positive, it was 8.2% today. And that's the highest it's been in weeks. Two weeks ago, the average rate was 5.8. An increase in the positivity rate generally indicates that the virus is spreading faster in the community. So in York County, our transmission rate remains high, as it does statewide. Regarding positive cases, today, in the Sanford School Department, we had 13 positive cases. We had six at Sanford Middle School, four from sending schools to SRTC, and one at C.J.L., one at MCS, and one at Sanford Pride for that. In terms of the eligible population fully vaccinated, York County, that's at 72.6%. When you break that down to Sanford, as of November 7th, Sanford had 94%, Springvale 91%. That got us into a green designation. Regarding the estimated school vaccination rates for the eligible students, back on November 7th, Sanford was in a yellow status. That was 50 to 54% of eligible people, eligible students vaccinated for that. As you know, we have to report our vaccination rates for our overall staff in the Sanford School Department. We've been doing that for both the beginning of September, the beginning of October, and then we've done that as well for the beginning of November. That total staff, when you start including bus drivers, coaches, and substitutes, et cetera, is 663. We have 569 of them vaccinated. There were 56 non-responses that we count as unvaccinated, in addition to the 52 that did state they were unvaccinated. So that gives us an overall rate of just under 85% of vaccinated. That's up from 80, just over 80% back at the beginning of October, and it's up from just under 75% at the beginning of September. So headed in the right direction there. You want to break that down for the individual schools? At C.J.L., they're just under 79%. MCS is just under 86%. Sanford Pride is just over 83%. Sanford Middle School, 77, over 77%. The high school, 92.81%. At SRTC, and this time, we broke out SRTC, the first two months, we combined them with Sanford High School, but with SRTC on their own, they're at just over 97%. Everyone else falls into kind of the overall district category, and that's at 80, just over 80, almost 88%. And as I said, that gives us an overall vaccination rate for our staff of just under 85%, 84.94. Pool testing, those sign-ups are slowly still creeping and increasing. As of last Wednesday, C.J.L. had 134 students and staff, MCS had 167 students and staff, Sanford Pride had 78 students and staff, the high school had 186 students and staff, and the middle school had 223. I also wanted to let people know that I met with a small group of superintendents from Cumberland County, New York County, last Friday afternoon, as there's, we've talked about it here at the school committee level in regards to what are those metrics going to be for us to be able to kind of use this as an off-ramp for COVID? And so, these are very preliminary discussions, because so far, any of those metrics look like they're going to be pushed back to individual schools. And even though that the data is definitely not in our favor, and we're concerned about where things are going, those discussions are starting to take place. Really, as it's very much preliminary and still in draft, the, they're really focused on vaccinations, a vaccination rate. vaccination rate would be for those that are eligible. That's gonna be one of those key metrics. And the other one would be just the number of positive cases that you have as well. I think those would be the two driving factors. And I mentioned that, and I want to caution that this is still very preliminary, and obviously, I know I am not medically certified or qualified to be able to be talking about this, but I think as a community, it's important for us to understand what's it gonna take for us to get on the other side of that. And that's where I want to push through in terms of continuing the push for vaccinations and signing up for pool testing as well. Our elementary vaccination clinics for students ages 5 to 11, they began today. We had Sanford Middle School started today with their first dose, and I think, Steve, I think we got word that we were somewhere around 100 people who had got the vaccination at Sanford Middle School. That would probably be mostly our fifth graders and some sixth graders there. C.J.L. is up next tomorrow from 12 to 4 to get their first dose, and I think we're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of 80 to 100 signed up right now for that. Students can still, and parents can still sign up in terms of where that is. So we'd like to see those numbers go up. And then vaccinations will resume next week, Monday, the 22nd, at Sanford Pride, and then Tuesday, the 23rd, will be at MCS. And the third, the second dose will be three weeks from where those are. In terms of that, we've sent out the forms and numerous reminders for that, but we'd also like to see more signups. We also recognize that a lot of families could be using their own pediatricians and doing this on their own and not working through the school, which is fine as well. And then there's some news for the athletics for the winter. I'm gonna wait, we've got Gordy coming up soon to give us an athletic update, and we'll be able to share that when it comes to the winter athletic season for that. And then finally, I did want to mention that in addition to the COVID vaccinations, there are other vaccinations that our students are also required to have. Specifically, I'm talking about the T-DAP and the MCV4. Those are usually targeted for kindergarten students as well as certain grades in middle school and the high school. And so I wanted to point out that we do have a number of students who we have not received their documentation yet for these vaccinations. And there is a deadline of November 30th that is fast approaching. And if you remember, Maine state law took away the philosophical exemption option, which was what a number of families and students had used in the past. So I want to make another plug out there when we're talking about vaccinations to also push that out there. So that's the latest update on our Safe Return to School. Any questions, comments, feedback, concerns?
I just echo that sentiment about getting vaccinated. And I believe the clinic at the old Marshalls, is it's, I know it's Sunday and another day they're doing the younger children vaccinations too. So it's, it's super easy. Get out there and get it done.
I received my booster and I went right into the walk-in right there down at the former Marshall sites. And what a fine tuned machine. It was easy in, easy out to be able to do that.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions?
I was just gonna say, it's just nice to know that, you know, have a goal to look forward to and that, as you mentioned, the off-ramp is being built.
Okay, great. Let's move on then.
I did want to report out that we did have a joint school committee meeting with the Acton School Committee on Thursday, November 4th. That took place out at Acton School. And the purpose of that meeting, if people don't know, Acton does have a contract with the Sanford School Department for their high school students in grades nine through 12 to enter, to attend Sanford High School. Because Acton, their school is K through eight, pre-K through eight, they do not have high school. So that's a 10-year agreement we've had with them, and that's coming to a close. So one of the reasons we got together was to review the current agreement. We also reviewed it and provided an overview of how the Acton students are doing at Sanford High School. And it was a very positive meeting. I think both sides appear to be very pleased with the arrangement. And there's a mutual interest to continue to have Acton contract with the Sanford School Department to send their students to Sanford High School. And so I think part of that meeting was to find out if Acton needed to start gauging interest in other schools, and they don't for that. So regarding next steps, we're gonna establish kind of a subcommittee that will have a representation with both Acton and Sanford School Department to review that current arrangement and then make some update and recommended changes to bring back to both groups for some feedback and then hopefully eventually adoption.
Excellent. Always great to work with Acton.
Also wanted to have word that we received Town and Country Federal Credit Union reached out to us with a contribution to our district for programs and initiatives that help support reducing student hunger with that. And so they were able to come back out and make a donation to us for that, a check in the amount of $100 in terms of what they were able to do to support that, that initiative in terms of that. They tried to time that contribution with the end of September as far as the Hunger Action Month in terms of what they look at in terms of the first month of school when people are coming back to be able to do that. So a big thank you to Town and Country Federal Credit Union for that donation, and we'll be able to work that with Holly Hartley, our food director, and put that to good use.
Excellent. Okay, and now everybody's favorite part, positive news.
Yeah. First thing I'd like to recognize, coming from our, the school department's K through 12 school counselors, Angela Avery, our new eighth grade school counselor at Sanford Middle School, we're pleased to announce that she will be presenting at the National School Counselor Conference this summer in Austin, Texas. That's a conference that's attended by over 4,000 national, international school counselors every year. Angela will be presenting about the work of suicide prevention on behalf of the Sanford School Department, K through 12 with that. So congratulations to Angela for that honor. High school, we heard earlier, Bella and Grace talked about the Theater Club performance that they put on Almost Maine recently in the first weekend of November. I was able to see that. I'm still wondering, and I might have some insight since you said you had sound effects, how did you get the boot to come dropping from the sky?
We have something called a fly rail, which is essentially a railing that we can lower and raise. And so we hooked it up and then you just, there's a rig and you drop it.
Do you have to pull something to be able to have it come down? All right.
That's what they did, right?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. All right, all right.
I was just as surprised as you.
And as you mentioned earlier, right, there was, one of the things we've had to deal with all throughout this year is just what COVID throws at us. And here's a production of a cast that had been working hard, and then right at the last moment,
Last 24 hours.
And someone came in and had to replace, and I remember,
Shout out to Lyndon Brown.
Brett announced that at the beginning of the show, and I can tell you that if he hadn't announced it, I probably wouldn't even have known.
Yeah, she did amazing.
And then when you see the students were performing, but then you also see how many students are behind the scenes, to be able to do that, it was outstanding.
It was great when we first started this show and we had our first meeting because I counted for attendance and there were 50 kids. And it was just like, what? Because we have, we had what, 20? 20 last year? So it was, it was really cool to see all of them. I'm really proud of a lot of the underclassmen too. They really, we had all of our onstage crew, except for like two people were completely new. So they were, they did a really good job.
Yeah, so you had a Friday performance for the student body and then also a Saturday night and a Sunday afternoon. I was able to go to the Saturday evening one. And as someone who's married, my wife is from Northern Maine, I really connected well to listening to that as well in terms of some of the references that they were giving in terms of that. So kudos there, and I think you're looking forward to Mama Mia in the spring coming up. So kudos, Sanford High School Theater Department. Moving over to Sanford Regional Technical Center, I had advertised it at our last meeting that they had a career in college fair on Tuesday, November 9th. It took a one-year hiatus due to COVID, but they were able to bring it back. And both high school and technical center students were able to explore options from 80 different colleges, employers, as well as branches of the military with that. So we're able to do that in a very safe way for that. So kudos there in terms of a well-done event put up, as you can see that they took over our competition gym. And then moving over to the middle school, their annual pie fundraiser was a huge success this year. Selling, students sold over 1,232 pies. That's the most ever in the state of Maine with that. So that is impressive. Top sellers in each grade were given their choice of a $25 gift card and the opportunity to pie a staff member. And runners-up each got a $10 gift card with that. So, and then, you know, to get all those pies are one thing, to get them all distributed, that was done in two hours. So kudos to Sanford Middle School. At Carl J. Lamb School, they're thankful for their veterans and appreciate their top-notch students and families and thankful for their PTA. So the first thing there is their attitude of gratitude. And you can see that their student engagement team has created this wonderful example of how they show their core values as a whole school. And the feathers are filled with messages of appreciation with gratitude for that. So there's an example of some of the things that people wrote on their feathers. Moving over to Margaret Chase Smith School, we talked about the theme in November is gratitude. And so at MCS, they have gratitude trees in each hallway, and students bring in their home leaves to fill out regards to what they're thankful for. And as you can see, they're starting to fill up with their different leaves. Also, to celebrate, leading up to Veterans Day, MCS started the MCS Heroes Wall, where staff and students could bring pictures, pictures of family members who have served our country and classes have been learning about what it means to be a veteran in the different branches of service. Yep, see some of that. And second graders have put a great deal of effort into their narrative writing pieces. They spent some time celebrating their writing pieces by reading their narratives to their classmates and then also recognizing specific components of the writing piece. Over at Sanford Pride Elementary School, they have instituted an assistant principal for the day. And so they had their first one. And our first assistant principal of the day was Darius B. He was the AP for the day. Darius had an opportunity to greet students off the bus, inspect the bathrooms and cafeteria, visit classrooms, make an announcement, use the walkie-talkie, hand out high fives to deserving students. He shared that his favorite part of the day was the classroom observations because he got to check out the classrooms and students to make sure everyone was learning. He had a very busy morning and even commented, wow, being an AP is exhausting. And I saw, I saw Darius in action when I was over there. He wanted to make sure I was, where I was going appropriate in the hallway and I had the right path to be able to where I go. So kudos to Darius for that. And then also want to put a plug in for Sanford Community Adult Education, who offers a local, no-cost solution that helps our community members transition to college, Maine College and Career Access Program. MCCA is a flexible, free, personalized program intended to help each student reach their goals. The student advisor meets with each student individually to set goals, map a pathway, gather needed supports and services, and transition into college or career training. Students can take advantage of SCAE's math, English, ESL, and computer classes to build their skills and receive instruction in college and career readiness skills from the student advisor. This careful blend of classes and advising gives students a clear pathway forward that meets their specific needs and prepares them for the career change they've been hoping for. And just a reminder, SCAE offers morning, afternoon, and evening classes, as well as flexible scheduling for advising appointments. And that's positive news.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. You made up for the Safe Return section. We got back on the positive track. Okay, Director's Reports. We have Athletic Director Gordy Salz, I assume via Zoom?
Yeah, Gordy, right now, as Grace mentioned earlier, there are some athletic awards nights taking place down at the high school. So he's been bouncing around there to be able to do that. So I think he's ready to join us. Gordy, are you there?
Yep, I'm all set to go.
All right, Gordy, we asked Gordy to come in to do kind of two things, to give us a little overview and summary of the fall sports season that just completed, but then also give us a little bit of a introduction in terms of winter sports.
Sure. Thanks for having me. As Grace had mentioned, we are culminating the end of, end of the fall season with award nights tonight and tomorrow night. We, we weren't, we were unable to do one night and have everybody in the performing arts center and then split up like we had done before COVID, which everybody enjoyed and was nice that kids were able to see all the awards given to each team and the parents were there to enjoy that. So we split it up into two nights so we could get all the parents in and they could be part of that awards night, which they should be. So tonight, we had soccer cheering and football, and tomorrow night it is, oh, field hockey, I was touching my brain the other night, field hockey, cross-country, and volleyball. And so we look forward to those. It's, it's gone off well tonight. It's great to have a fall season culminating in the end of awards banquets with the kids and the parents and the coaches together. The season, you know, it was, the season was disjointed a little bit because of COVID, no other way to put it. Every team was affected along the way with kids who had to quarantine. And I think the success of the seasons was in fact, our opportunity to give kids the chance to compete and participate and to have a season from the beginning to the end and finish that. Some teams finished it in different ways than others because some, a couple of the teams had to miss games because of COVID and close quarantine and not being able to provide enough kids to be able to participate in those games. Special note, our volleyball team in its third year won its first playoff game. It was awesome here. And they were defeated by Gorham in the quarterfinals. So they had a great season that the other kids did not, but it was special to have a new program make the playoffs so quickly and to be competitive as they are in our league. The fall, we had finished with 250 kids at the high school and 110 at the junior high. I think the kids and the coaches deserve huge kudos for persevering through the season. Coaches did a great job managing the COVID attendance. Speaking about the nurses, they were awesome and the amount of work that they did, and I'm so glad that they were recognized. Certainly, we had to work closely with them through all the back tracing and when kids were able to come back. And the kids and the coaches worked through that. And it's not easy when you're sometimes two days before a game and you find out half your team, you're losing half your team, and who are you bringing up and how are we competing? You know, the kids played through that, the coaches coached through that. It's challenging not knowing who's gonna be playing beside you sometimes. And it's hard for game planning when you're losing kids in the middle of the week and you play Friday night. So they did a great job working through all that. It's not easy to do that. And I can't say enough about our kids and our coaches for having great attitudes to work through all of that. Thank yous to our athletic training staff, Jesse and Erin, who did an awesome job working through injuries and the COVID. Actually, the Bitford School Department for providing 35 buses, bus trips for us to get our kids to where they needed to be. get our kids to where they needed to be. My administrative assistant Becky for dealing with all the constant changes with the buses and games. And our custodians for keeping Alumni Stadium looking shipshape so the community can come in there for those games and see a great stadium and where we have a lot of pride in. Zach Lemon for my assistant in helping covering games and doing a lot of work with me. And as we roll into the winter season, all the coaches are having, have had their meetings. Notoriously, we have kids sign up right to the end. So, the numbers, I'm not reporting on tonight, the preliminary numbers, but they're about where we always are in the winter. We have smaller program in the winter. So, we will start Tuesday, Monday, the 22nd with tryouts and swim team wrestling. Everybody ready to roll? And I look forward to that. I think the challenges for the winter will again be COVID and how we're able to manage that because there's no magic pill to take care of it. It's, if we can't get a higher vaccination rate, then it will affect the teams. And, you know, our kids and coaches will go through it, but we would certainly like to be able to not be interrupted with our season the way we have, were in the fall. Officials are going to be a challenge. For example, in wrestling right now statewide, there are only 13 wrestling officials. So, how we manage that with duels and tries and quads and then tournaments is going to be certainly a challenge for us and how, and how we get through that season. Matt mentioned that we received preliminary winter, winter sport recommendations. So, there's five bullets to that right now. And the first one is that all athletes will be masked at all times, including during practices and competition, except when the swimmers are in the water. Obviously, they wouldn't be able to do that. That we're continually to strongly recommend that kids get vaccinated and or get, get into pool testing. Couple of things that have come up, if, some of the schools have made these deciding if their kids wearing masks or not during competition. And I believe there's going to be some of that. If you're a school that is masking and you decide not to play them, then you would not be penalized for not playing that game. It wouldn't be a forfeit. Everybody has to default to the home team's guidance, concerns, spectators, and concessions. It's going to be different at every school. So, communication with the athletic director is going to be paramount to the coaches and parents in the community. So, they know if they're going to, say, Portland, there's only so many people that are going to be allowed in that venue and, and what else has to happen for kids to be able to go and participate in that venue. Outside venues like USM, UNE, St. Joe's, all, all have more stringent guidelines that if we're going to swim or run into a track, those, those guidelines are going to have to be adhered to. Otherwise, our kids will not be able to participate that day if they don't meet those guidelines. So, that's where we are. And if anybody has any questions or Matt wants to add anymore, that's something I might have missed about the winter, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Gordy. I think one of the things just to mention too is, what hasn't changed is, in order to stay out of quarantine, if you're not symptomatic, you could be classified as a close contact. But if you don't have symptoms, if you are vaccinated or if you're participating in pool testing, that would allow you to be able to stay out of quarantine and continue to participate. So, I want to continue to stress that as we look at the idea working into the winter season because Gordy gave an overview in terms of, you know, some of the overall recommendations that are going to be there. And in some cases, we are going to have to adhere to the actual venue that we participate in, whether that could be playoffs for basketball, or it could be a swim meet or a track meet on a college campus. So, those are things that are beyond Sanford's control in that sense. So, just another, you know, reason for me to, to emphasize and recommend that people can be able to look at vaccinations and pool testing.
Excellent. Well, I just want to say thanks, Gordy. As always, I can't even imagine the amount of work that you put in, but it is greatly appreciated by everybody.
Thank you and have a great evening.
Thanks, Gordy. Wait, don't, we're going to Steve. Gordy wants, Gordy wants to get back to the awards programs and everything, so. Okay, Steve, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on transportation. The staffing challenges that we had to begin the year are still present in the Transportation Department with Ledgmere. Currently, if we were full on, if all the buses were on the road that we contract for, we would be short five driver, five drivers and two monitors. Some things that we have done since the beginning of the year, right out of the gate, we encourage parents to transport their kiddos to school. That was to help us with the social distancing on the buses, but also to help with transportation. Since that time, we have combined some routes to keep the buses on the road. Currently, we are down two large bus routes and two small bus routes from our original plan. The manager and assistant manager, Kevin Banfield and Rose Dunn, have been on the road consistently every day to keep our buses running. One of the holes that created was in their office, their front office staff. And so, working with Ledgmere, they were able to get somebody in there to at least answer the phones for us. So, there's someone on the other line if we had, needed to get ahold of somebody. In the fall, one of the strategies Ledgmere also used was they raised their sign-on bonus locally for drivers that came on board. And so, they raised, it was $1,500, they have raised that to $2,500. And that has been in effect since the beginning of October that went into effect. They have hired some new drivers, but as they hire new drivers on, they are also losing drivers to, that are going for better opportunities for, for employment. So, that has been a continual challenge. One of the things that we, as Gordy mentioned, as we reached out to Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative and Bitterford, they have provided some after-school transportation for us to keep our athletic contest going. And Gordy said they provided 35 buses this fall. That's in addition to what Ledgmere has provided. Ledgmere also did provide some transportation for us. The challenges over the past few weeks, we have had to close some routes down. And so, I think that's why it's important to bring this topic up for conversation tonight. When, as the flu season has now started, the drivers, like teachers or ed techs, they're starting to get illnesses. And so, over the past couple of weeks, we've had some drivers that have had to be out, non-COVID related. And so, when their drivers are out, that creates a shortage. We are on a bare bones. If everybody's here, our buses can run on time, but if someone is unable to make it, that's when we need to close down a route. And we have had to make some of those adjustments over the past couple of weeks. When we are, become aware that a route needs to be closed down, we send information out to parents as soon as possible. Yesterday afternoon, we had a call that Bus 20 was going to be off, off the road this morning. We got that information out. This morning, we're good to go. Hop in the shower, brush my teeth. And then, Kevin calls and says, oh, we have another driver that didn't, didn't come in today. We don't know what happened. And so, that's why the late announcement came this morning. But parents, please know, as soon as we know, we're getting that message out to you. We're also trying to limit the impact on any one route when possible. So, we have had one consistent driver that's been on a bus, but we've mixed it around to try to make sure we're, we're spreading the, the pain out with that. They do have another driver in the wings to come on board. She's having her driving exam tomorrow, so we're all keeping our fingers crossed. That, that will bring a driver into, for a regular route tomorrow that should help provide some relief if she, if she passes her exam. One of the big issues that we've continually talked to Ledgmere about is athletics and not having the athletic drivers available to do our routes. And they have hired a halftime person, or a halftime person, somebody to drive the athletic routes in the afternoon that came on board late this fall. That should help. It's not going to cover it all, but it should help. And so, we continue to, to move routes around, try to limit the impact on families, but please know we are trying all we can do to keep our buses on the road, to keep kids in school, and with that.
And Steve, thank you for all the work that you've done with, working with Ledgmere, as well as trying to navigate that, that challenge. And what I would say is, you know, that's not unique to Sanford in terms of the transportation. We're not immune to it. You're seeing that it's happening statewide where there's other people who are also having to shut down bus routes and in some ways, almost entire transportation in some places with that. So, as challenging as it's been, as you said, a big thank you to our families and our students for their patience and understanding and also for the people who are doing everything they can to, to work together and navigate this.
And I also thank you to the bus drivers as well because they, they are on the front lines. So, if our, the buses are running a little bit late or something happens, they're the ones on the front line. And just a kudos to all of them and what they've done for us. Second thing I wanted to bring you an update tonight is the, just an update on our homeless students. I think one of the things that you all know, the housing crunch in the local community and the surrounding communities in Southern Maine, it is having an impact. And so, tonight, just give you an update on the number of homeless students we have in the district. It has increased. Our homeless students falls under what we call the McKinny-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. And the goal of the McKinny-Vento Act is to minimize the educational disruption for students. So, to keep students in a, in the environment where things are consistent for them. Students are identified as homeless if they lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. This includes sharing housing due to loss of housing or economic hardship, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camping grounds due to a lack of housing, living in emergency or transitional housing, which we do have some emergency and transitional housing in Sanford, having a primary nighttime residence that is a public or private place, not designed for ordinary use, and then living in cars, parks, and like abandoned buildings. Those are all things that would qualify some of these homeless. Now, students that are homeless, they have an obligation or a right to remain in the school in which they are currently attending. That's the right of a homeless student. And so, oftentimes, what we have to do is to get a student to our schools or to get a student to Wells, or get a student to Bitterford, or get a student to Massabesic. And so, the biggest expense with that is transportation. And it's an unfunded mandate. It's unfunded mandate that we oftentimes find grant money to help subsidize. A steady income for that is our Title I grant. And through the Title I grant, we're able to get some funds annually. This year, over the summer, we had an opportunity with the American Rescue Plan to apply for a couple of different grants. In, in July, we were awarded a $35,000 grant to help our homeless students. In just the past couple of weeks, we were issued another American Rescue Plan grant for the, in the amount of $29,242,000. So, that is a significant support to our district in supporting our homeless students. Those, that money will pay for transportation. It also pays for if they need any general school supplies or if they need anything in general to get them to school. So, that covers things like shoes, clothing. This grant also will provide for mental health supports. So, if a student needs to see outpatient therapy and doesn't have main care at the time, we can cover the copay for that cost through this grant. And it also pays for training for staff. One of the things that our staff, our front office staff is being identify, what are those, those things that people may say, or those warning signals that we need to pick up on to make sure that we're identifying students that may qualify for this. So, just giving an estimate, not an estimate, these are real numbers. Last year, the whole entire school year, we had 31 students that were identified as homeless. That's a little on the low side as we look past years. But this year already, as of today, we have 30 students, 37 students that are, have been considered homeless in our district. So, those numbers, when you hear the numbers are on the rise, those numbers are on the rise. But the good news is we, we have some funds to help support these kids the best we can to provide them with some continuity in their education. And really, school's a place where they, we know them. We know these kids. We provide a warm place, warm shelter, food, relationship. So, it's just something we need to make sure and pay attention to and hopefully these grants, funds will support that. And finally, I'm not coming back up tonight for policies. So, I hope you all can hold yourself.
But you are going to a...
Yes. So, on Thursday, I have a second round two of Drummond and Woodsum's policy, annual policy updates. And so, what this is about is what needs to be changed in our policies based on the previous laws. So, they are coming. So, hang tight.
Thanks for the warning, Steve. Brace ourselves.
That's all I have. Anybody have any questions or?
Anything? No. But thanks for the heads up. All of our viewers at home are the real policy followers. They'll know to anticipate that coming up. They'll mark the calendar and they'll anxiously await it. Okay, so next we have new business, our September 21 financials. Cheryl, the floor is yours.
Yes. I got a bunch of paper here, so I'm going to be up here for a while. So, our September financials, general education and adult education is at $7.4 million of revenue and $5.6 million in expenses for a net revenue of $1.8 million. Of course, July and August, we have no teacher or ed tech expenses, so it, we definitely have revenue over expenses during that time period. There are 29 special revenue accounts with activity during the current fiscal year. We have .3 million in revenue and $1.1 million in expenses for a net of .8 million in expense. We have three capital, capital funds and we have just $5,000 worth of revenue, which is interest on some of the money that we have held for the bonds, and $2.1 million in expenses for a net of expense of $2.1 million. We currently have three enterprise funds that have .2 million worth of revenue and .3 million worth of expenses for a net expense of .1 million. And then, we have the trust funds, which have $5,000 worth of revenue and $6,000 worth of expenses for a net expense of $1,000. If you look at the second page of our financials, which are looking at our different categories that we use, salary and benefits are at .6 million. That's an increase of only $61,000 over the prior year. For the purchased professional and technical services, we have 537,000 worth of expense, property services of $110,000, other purchase services of $503,000, supply and energy of $451,000, and property management of $54,000. It's coming in about $184,000 over a prior year, which is actually still reasonable. And debt, of course, there's not a lot going on there currently, but it's $26,000 of expense as of year-to-date. For the bottom part of the second page, we have Articles 1 through 4, which are our direct instruction. We contributed about $2.9 million of expense. Articles 5 through 7, which is our staff support, is about $1.3 million. And Article 8, transportation, is $211,000 worth of our expense. Article 9, which includes also our CIP, which we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes, is $1.1 million of expense. And debt, of course, there's actually none as of right now. It's due to timing. And then, Article 11 has only $10,000 worth of expense. Adult education, academic only, has $100,000 worth of expense. So, we have $5.6 million worth of expense. worth of expense. Adult education revenue was $4,000 above last year, and state subsidy is the only real revenue as of this point for the school. I just build out a bunch of stuff, so you'll start seeing some more activity there. Any questions?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the September 21 financials as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Paula? Paula seconds it. Any discussion? No? All in favor? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay, reserve accounts now, Cheryl?
Reserve accounts. Yes, I went over this all two weeks ago. Did you want me to go back over it again, or?
Do you have to? I'm going to make a motion.
Questions?
We can do these all as one motion, right? I'm going to make a motion to approve reserving $363,293 into the Unexpected Special Education Cost Reserve Fund, $32,572 into the Capital Reserve Fund, and $234,319 into the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. Do I have a second? Second from Amy? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Putting away for rainy day. I think we've talked about that on multiple occasions, so. Substitute rates, Cheryl?
Okay, so substitute rates, while we were working on some of our union contracts and stuff like that, we determined to pull out the food service hourly subrate out of the contract to allow us to be able to adjust due to market easier, because a lot of times your union contracts might be a three-year contract. This one isn't, but we pulled it out as we thought it would be easier, especially with everything going on. So what we are proposing is to change the rate for food service to $15 for experienced and $14 and, $14.50 for non-experienced. We also want to change the administrative assistant subrates and utilize, looking at what the union contract had, to use that as kind of a base. So we want to change the experience rate to $16 an hour. Actually, that one is actually staying the same, and no experience to $15 an hour. So we're trying to make sure that we have the no experience at the same rate as the beginning contract. And so that was more what we're trying to just get things in line.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the amended substitute rates as presented. Do I have a second? Paula? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Okay, and next, you've got a lot of stuff tonight, Cheryl.
I do.
You're like working overtime here. Compensation schedule for additional COVID-10, COVID-19, right?
Yep.
Is that a typo? I was like, wait a second, is there another COVID out there that I forgot about?
So what, what this is doing is actually, you guys might remember actually approving these over the past year, but we adjusted it slightly. So I'll just tell you the adjustments that we made and kind of the theory behind them. The teachers' CHITS, we're doing it at 1.5 times the annual rate. Their contracted rate actually changed, so we wanted to keep it at the same rate. The grades nine through 12, doing it at 1.5 because their rate also changed in the contract, and keeping them similar to what we did in the past contract, or the past year. And then the teacher's coverage for after-school for the B-C, I guess the very last one, we're changing it to the minimum teacher rate to be consistent with the, with professional development and stuff like that. So that's, everything else was just staying the same.
And I'll just add in, when it gets back to the CHITS that we were talking about, if you remember, last year, we did make some adjustments that with the ESSER funds, we did come in to pay more. We increased what those were in the contract based on the need for people, the need with that. Then we came into this year, we went back to what we were in the contract, and then with everything that's gone on with COVID, that need still very much exists. And so to the point where we're very appreciative of all the people who are stepping up and helping us. So we are, with the adjustments that Cheryl talked about, bringing those rates back to what they were last year, and we are, with your approval, making this retroactive back to the beginning of the school year, because we do pay those at two ti, excuse me, two times during the year. So this is just kind of a, at the idea, our best thought back when we looked at this, and now it's coming back to say we need to recommend that we make this adjustment based on current circumstances.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed compensation schedule for additional COVID-19-related duties as presented. Do I have a second? Paula, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Mapes?
Yeah, Matt, is that, is this, I don't want to make small talk of the value of this, but is this, this is contractual usually within the union contracts. Is this a temporary adjustment until such time we get back to whatever the hell normal is?
It is, and I think we asked about where we put the timeline on that and...
Yep. So this one, it goes, retro's back to the beginning of this school year and ends at the end of the first semester, which is January 21st, 2022. Of course, that date might change slightly if it changes, but yes.
Yeah, so we've got that in knowing that this is temporary.
Yeah. You may see me back here in February.
I understand and accept that. I just, just wanted to have that conversation.
I got any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, and the last thing for Cheryl, apparently we want to buy a truck.
Yes.
I'm always in favor of buying a truck.
Well, this one is a little bit different. Normally, we would go out to bid for a, a truck of this sort, because anything over $15,000, our policy says that we should go out to bid. The economy and what's going on in the world of buying a vehicle right now is making it very difficult to actually do that. You would actually have to go out to bid, which would take a four to six weeks to process that. You know, by the time you send it out to bid, get them to respond, pick the right, the bid, the winning bid, have you guys approve that bid, et cetera, et cetera. That adds four to six weeks on to the process. Then they would order the truck, which would be built, which will take anywhere from four to 18 months, and they're saying more like 18 months. I know a couple of towns that are still waiting for vehicles that they ordered at the beginning of, or the end of last year, or this time last year. So the, it's really difficult to find a vehicle. So we went on the hunt for our used vehicle, thinking that maybe we could find a used truck that was still decent, because the truck that we currently have that we want to replace is not real safe. It's not one that we really think we can make it through the winter, and possibly have to make it through two winters if we went to, out to bid and tried to purchase a vehicle. So we kind of went through, we called all the dealerships in Southern Maine. Nobody has anything that would meet our qualifications and stuff to have a plow put on it and its sander. And so we ended up finding one that happens to be sitting in Michigan and just waiting for transportation. The dealership has allowed us to put our name on it and waiting for, tonight for us to vote, and then it would be ours when it gets here. We think this is the best option for us at the time. We but, we budgeted 30, ah, 39, $69,000 for this vehicle, and the bid came in at $65,959. Who knows if we went out to bid, if it would be higher or lower? I think it would be higher in the long run, so I feel like this is actually a decent deal. But the problem is, is that getting that truck for this winter would be really a blessing and to have it. And so this is why we're trying to ask for an exception, to use the exception clause of Policy DJ and have you guys approve to bypass the bidding process due to economy and time factors.
I see you answered my question, Cheryl. I was going to ask to make sure that we were actually able to do this, and I had assumed you'd done your homework. Questions, comments from anybody? I mean, anybody who's aware at all of what the current situation is, trying to find any sort of vehicles, knows that it's impossible, so. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2022 GMC as presented. Do I have a second? Amy? Amy really wants to second this one. Paula, you didn't even get the chance. Discussion, Mr. Mapes?
Yeah, probably the only thing, I agree with everything you've talked about and support it and will vote for it. I think the one sentence in here that troubles me a little bit is that the school has not kept up with their vehicles and keeping with our CIP program. That troubles me a little bit, so.
Yeah, we, I think we kind of talked about that a little bit during the budget process, that we had actually put in additional money down into the vehicle portion of our CIP for this reason, because we had so many vehicles that weren't really, trying to think of the good word to say. But we really need to put some money into a few vehicles. We're looking for a good used box truck.
Save your breath. There aren't many people keeping vehicles 17 years, so.
That's what I'm thinking. It's been, it's, I think it's got its useful life.
Well, I think sometimes those are the items that get kicked down the road. And I think that's just shows you, you end up in this situation. And so that's something for us that we're going to have to be able to, going forward in that budget process, is get on a, get on a rotating basis and be able to have something that's going to be able to help us be sustainable for that and commit to it.
Right. It's either put a bunch of money into it to get it through the winter or buy a new one.
If John were here, he'd probably be on the edge of his seat as I am. We sat in a school committee meeting probably four years ago, and we asked, at the time, the facilities director to take a vehicle off the road. They were letting students drive an unregistered vehicle that had no floorboards, and so I get a little heated on this exact topic, so get the truck.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor? All in favor? Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks. Okay, old business, we have none. Resignations, Mr. Nelson?
Two to announce, Brenda Durant as food service personnel from Sanford High School, effective back at the end of October, and Matthew Foley, wrestling coach, that's actually at the middle school, not the high school, but Matthew Foley, wrestling coach, Sanford Middle School.
Yeah, we thank them for the time and wish them nothing but the best. Staff appointments, Mr. Nelson?
Sure, a few to announce. Steve Brown, back, coming back to us. He'll be coming back to a third shift custodian position at the high school. Cheryl Driscoll, welcome her on as the executive administrative assistant here at Central Office, who will be replacing Liz Dudgeon. And Liz is off to retirement. She's still with us, hanging in the air, and we're trying to, you know, convince her to stay on, but to no avail. And so she's been working with Cheryl, thankfully, and helping as we work on that transition. As Cheryl will be coming back and joining us full-time starting next Monday. Also Andrea Ellie as a second shift custodian. That's one of the, a position that's going to be shared between MCS and Sanford Middle School. Priscilla Lane, food service personnel at Pride. Jamie Latan, Latan, Lantain, food service personnel at the middle school, and then Ashley Walker as a special ed ed tech at Sanford Middle School.
Welcome aboard. Now we have some winter coaching appointments.
Yep, winter coaching appointments. First team boys basketball, Josh Allen. JV girls basketball, Mark Buzzino. Assistant high school wrestling coach, Brent Coleman. Assistant swimming coach, Heidi Hamerly. Varsity girls basketball coach, Rossi Kirsten. Seventh grade girls basketball coach, Jamie Lovejoy. Seventh grade boys basketball coach, Nate Mann. Eighth grade girls basketball coach, Dave McCall. Head varsity basketball coach at Sanford High School, Jacob Mills. Varsity swimming coach, Aaron Morrow. Varsity cheering coach, Kendra O'Connell. Middle school cheering coach, Maura O'Sullivan. JV boy bas, JV boys basketball, Matt Willett. And head varsity wrestling coach at Sanford High School, Nate Smith.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Staff transfers.
I already announced Josh Allen. He's going from JV boys basketball to the first team boys basketball. Karen Chek, from 4.25 hours a day at Pride, moving over to the high school, 4.25 hours a day. Michelle Greve, moving her from an ESSER-funded grade one teacher position to the locally-funded grade one teacher position. Matt Willett, as I've already mentioned, going to JV's, JV boys basketball from grade eight. And then Sean Rowe, from third shift at the custodian at the high school, that's actually a typo, he's going to the first shift custodian position at the high school. And then Katie Spulick, from 3.75 hours at Pride, to increase in hours at Pride to 4.25.
Excellent. Staff nominations, I see none. And policies and procedures, as Steve was nice enough to point out earlier, none. Items for future agenda, do we have anything from anybody? All good. Calendar announcements, Monday, December 6th, we have our next regular school committee meeting at 6:00 PM. And then Monday, December 20th, our regular school committee meeting at 6:00 PM. What else do we have, Mr. Nelson, for calendar?
Wellness committee meeting tomorrow. That will be done via Zoom, 3:30 to 4:30. As I mentioned earlier in the construction report, core building committee meeting this Thursday via Zoom at 4:00. As I also mentioned in the high school technical center scheduled advisory committee, next meeting Tuesday, the 30th at 2:30. And then the next SRTC advisory committee meeting is going to be prior to our next school committee. That will be on Friday, December 3rd.
Excellent. Anything else? Anybody wants to put out there for calendar announcements? Okay. With that, and Mr. Rue's absence, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. Everybody have a great night.